All right, I've got five o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I don't think it's working, but okay. I'm gonna put it up. Yeah, it's, I don't think it's hello. No, we're good, we're good. I've got five o'clock. Call this meeting to order, June 27th, 2024. I'll ask for the Coleman if you'll lead us in a word of prayer.
Let us know. It's Father God, we just want to thank you for today. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you for the understanding and for the people of Hartford and our county, Lord. And Lord, we asking you to just be in the midst and, Lord, touch our words and let it be yea yea and not ney ney. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I like the way you put that.
That's right. All right. Before you have the minutes of the last meeting, after reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I make the motion to accept the minutes.
I have a first by Mary Bell, second by Tony. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like si, motion carries. All right. Tara, do you have anything to bring up?
No, I'm in general.
Okay. I will be getting maybe with David here in a little while because I think we got a couple hearings that...
Coming up?
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll get together on that pretty soon. All right, thank you. Before you have the financial reports, after reviewed, I'll ask for a motion to accept the financial statements.
Make a motion to accept the financial reports.
I have a first and second. You get Mary Bell and David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like si, motion carries. All right, action in old business. We don't have no old business. So we'll go on down to new business. I'm gonna ask Tim with Grad to come up, explain this resolution 24-03. Tom, I thought it was Tim.
I mean, Tom was stressing.
Sorry, Tom Lovett.
Uh, thank you for having me here. I appreciate, appreciate your time. Uh, my name is Tom Lovett. I'm with Grad Hill and Pearl. The reason I'm here today is the city of Hartford is receiving federal highway administration funds for a road project. And I would be very honest with you, I don't know what the project is, but I know you guys are receiving federal highway funds. The federal highway administration has changed a policy this year. It says that any organization or community that's receiving federal highway administration road funds for a private project must sign off on or draft a Title VI plan. And Title VI is nothing new. It's nothing that you're not already doing. It's nothing crazy different. Title VI was a part of the civil rights legislation in 1964. What Title VI says is that you will not discriminate on the basis of race, color, or national origin. Okay? So, I mean, this is not new legislation. This has been in the legal law since 1964. What they're saying now is, they're saying if you're getting FHWA money, you're supposed to be compliant with this. Okay? They want you to sign something that says, "We are compliant with this." So that's really what this is. So what they said was, they told Kentucky Transportation Cabinet this. Kentucky Transportation Cabinet said, "Well, what we could do is we could go to all these communities and the River Falls, which is where I was yesterday, and we can make them draft..." This is Grad's, this is Grad's plan. This is nine to five pages long, and I maintain this. I submit it every year for approval. Uh, and they can make you draft one of these. Or they said what you could do is go to each of the communities and they could adopt, just sign off on the plan and say, "We will support and live by the plan" that they add for that, you know, that you are in would, that they have that has been approved. So like, you guys fall into the Grad region, this would, falling green is signing off on the one from Brad, that sort of thing. So that's what we're doing here. Uh, you guys have to do four things to be compliant. You have to adopt our plan, or you have to adopt a plan. And like I said, we're recommending you do this one because this one has been approved by FHWA and the Office of Civil Rights at KYTC. That got done, uh, May 6th, I think is when they signed this. So, I mean, it's very recently been accepted. So this is brand new. It's just been approved. It's everything you need, everything you need to do. Uh, so you have to adopt a plan. You have to provide an organizational chart for the city administration. And it doesn't have to be everybody. It has to be like the mayor, who the commissioners are, who is your Title VI person? Who's going to be the person responsible if there is a complaint? Who can somebody come to in Hartford if they feel like they've been discriminated against by a city employee? Uh, and how has that person got access to the mayor? So it could be, you know, the city clerk, and you say, "Okay, well, the city clerk works in the same building, and here's the org chart. They work side by side." So you have to submit this to the org chart. Uh, they have provided you guys with a questionnaire that you have to fill out that says, you know, here's what the demographics of Hartford is, here's what the demographics of the city commission is. And then the final thing is you have to do some training, and it's basically people have to watch a video that says, "This is what Title VI discrimination is. This is why you don't want to do it. Here's how to avoid doing it." Okay? So I've been working with Lisa, going back and forth on getting these requirements filled. Uh, this is, this is really the easy one. If you guys, she has resolution that we provided you language that you just have to sign off on. So that's what I'm here for. That's my pitch. If anybody has any questions, if you want to see this, I'll hopefully leave this copy with you. Um, if you have any questions or concerns or anything you need to know, please, that's what I'm here for. I'm here to answer those.
Okay. So I guess that needs to be read, and then...
And then we need to vote.
And then we need a roll call vote, that?
Yeah, and on that one, just a regular vote.
Just a regular vote. Okay.
Stacia, will you read it? Resilience 2403, whereas the federal government enacted Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 is amended to prevent discrimination on the grounds of race, color, or national origin, and whereas Section 162A of the Federal Aid Highway Act of 1963, Section 324, Title 23, USC, identifies sex as a class protected from discrimination. And whereas KRS 344.015 outlines implementation plans for the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 as amended by state agencies. And whereas it is requirement of the Kentucky Department of Transportation and the U.S. Department of Transportation that agencies receiving federal financial assistance adopt a Title VI plan. And whereas the city of Hartford is the recipient of federal financial assistance from the Kentucky Department of Transportation. And whereas the city of Hartford assures that all of its programs, services, and activities will be free from discrimination, whether those programs, services, or activities are federally funded or not. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hartford City Commission, did I say Council? As its regular public meeting of June 27th, 2024, do hereby adopt the attached Title VI plan.
Thank you.
Can I just, one thing real, real fast. When she was reading that, reminded me of something that I wanted to make clear. So Title VI says race, color, or national origin. And one thing that we, I told you, I update this thing every year. One of the changes they've had every year, they had this take this out last year, and we put it back in this year, is the word sex. And when she read the resolution, the word sex is in there. Sex is a protected class, and in reference to this, it's specifically gender, but we've been told that federal courts have ruled that that can be construed to mean L, B, G, T, U, and all the things that that encompasses. Okay? So sex is in there as well. So if you're gay or trans or whatever, also protected under this resolution. That's it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we need the wording changed before it's passed, or can we just...
You gotta change that commissioners to council.
Council.
I think if you, you're not gonna sign it right this second.
Yeah, I think it'd be fine, so. Um...
That's fine.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I make a motion, we adopt this resolution 2403.
Aye, second.
I have a first by Mary Bell, second by Stacia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like si, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris.
Which one do we start with?
Uh, I've got, I've got you down for the, for the big number one there.
Okay.
I don't know that word.
The raw water line at the water plant, as we talked of at the last council meeting, is getting very bad shape. It's deteriorating, it's corroding.
Yeah.
Getting holes in it all the time. We're constantly repairing it the best we can to get by. The bolts are breaking and rusting off. We've been trying to replace them as we can. We reached out to Luttrells, which Luttrells does most of their contracting work. They said it was beyond them. That they wouldn't even consider touching it. So they put us in touch with another company called Bound, too.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, hold on just a second.
Okay.
If y'all not recalled on this, this was brought up at the last meeting, but it was, it was, had to be out for the bid.
Yes, right.
So basically, I didn't want you to go through the whole story.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't going through the whole.
Because it's already been there after I've sat there and thought about it. I was like, wait a minute.
I've heard this before.
So, so basically, um, we got one bid, right?
And that's what I was getting ready to start with.
All right, there you go.
With Bound 2, they, they're the only ones that submitted the bid, and it's for $98,746. They said it would take an estimate of three days to complete the job.
That's not bad.
It's not bad. Originally, it was seven to 10 days.
And...
During this time, though, we would have to purchase water from the county. We'll have to be in agreement with Eric over here.
And that is a question that you need to get with Eric.
I'm gonna get with Eric.
To make sure that they can make our flow happen within the city.
With that, and he told me before, me and him discussed this last year, and he said two to three days was fine, but seven to 10 was kind of pushing it, but I will get with him.
Just make sure that he's still okay with that, and then...
And figure, and we'll figure out how we'll go about billing and setting all that up, too.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Is it warranted or can...
Yes, it does have a warranty to it. Uh...
I didn't see that.
It's written on here, but I know he'll stand behind any repairs, any leaks.
Yeah.
Anything he says that happens, he'll stand behind her. And Luttrells actually highly recommended this company. They said they stand behind them. They're very reputable.
Does his, does all that go into contract, though, him standing behind? I mean, is that written? It's not just a gentleman's agreement that he's standing behind his work?
Uh, it, we'll sign off on it.
Okay.
So the final word will have a warranty.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And I think this needs to, if, if we're in agreement to this, I think this would be a good project to take out of the ARPA funds. Cause it is needed, and my vision is, is at one point, I want to get that down there and shape again where I want kids to come down there and see what's operating and see what it's all about.
That right there is the worst part of the plant when you see it. It's very rugged.
So that's my vision is I want to get that back up to the capacity where it once was. Um, with that being said, do I have a motion to accept this bid at $98,746 to come out of ARPA?
I make a motion that this money come out of ARPA funds.
I'll second it.
I have a first by Stacia, a second by Mr. Coleman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like si, motion carries. Thank you.
Where does this leave the city on the margin?
Uh, right now, give or take, not three. And we got to December, so we're gonna have to... Now explain the other one there.
Okay. Uh, one day we come into our plant, and we determined that we couldn't get enough water from the river. There is two river pumps that sits down here behind Charlie's Market that pumps water up to the water plant. One pump is completely burned up. It just, it hasn't been rebuilt or repaired in over 10 years. Last year was, the last time it was pulled and repaired was 2014. At that time, it was rebuilt, but it hasn't had any repairs since then. It just had a lot of wear and tear on it, and the pump has, went out. The last time we had it rebuilt, I actually checked on it, and I think it cost 3,400 bucks to have it rebuilt. But with inflation over the last 10 years, it's went up to 7,319 dollars. But it's something that we have to have to get water to the plant. We have one pump that's still going, but if it goes out, we're completely shut down.
Yeah.
That's our only lifeline is extra.
So that's, I mean, and we've had, me and him's had this discussion, and that's one of those unique things that it has, you know, we have to have something like that, so.
And ARPA funds can take that as, too?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be fine. Cause right now, we have, I have, I think we have a little bracket for ARPA for water. So we would still be within that amount. So I think that would be fine.
So this is a rebuild price? Is there a reason you...
This is a rebuild price. I also got a price on a brand new pump, just to see what the equivalent would be, and it's $20,000 for a new pump.
How, how long do those last?
Well, they normally, well, the last few has lasted 10 to 12, 10 to 15 years, depending on how much they're running. Hopefully, they'll last longer.
What about on the rebuild of it?
Uh, well, that was with the rebuilds.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We've never bought new pumps before. They're, they're the original pumps from 1991. They've just been rebuilt multiple times.
Wouldn't we be a little bit more prudent if we go ahead and repair this one and plan on buying a new one to replace the other one?
That, that would be something good to look at in the future.
Yes, yeah.
And not sit there and worry about, we're gonna have to shut them all down.
Yep. I agree. That would be something to look at in the future.
I think that's something we need to pursue.
So rebuild and a new one?
Not at the same time. We have that kind of money, but...
Do you have any ARPA funds to do the purchase of the company?
Do what?
Do you have any ARPA funds right now to do the, to buy a new pump?
Yeah, we, we have enough. If y'all want to take out of ARPA, we can do that.
Well, buy a new one.
I have no problem taking it out of ARPA.
Well, he's already in the process of, cause we, you know, we talked about it as an emergency. He's already got it tore apart, and
Okay.
He's already started the process of getting it ready to rebuild.
That's fine, that's fine.
But here we got another one. We've got another pump.
We're talking about 15 years.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yes, that was your last 10 to 15 years of life. Can we buy a new one, rebuild this one, and put it up for our time?
Yeah, cause you'll still have it, so I'm, I'm good with it.
I just want to make sure that...
So rebuild this one, and then, yeah, I'm all right with that.
And buy a new one.
That's something y'all could put in.
Be about 27?
So it would be nice to have a new one and have it for a spark.
Ergo, you're right. You should have the next year's.
Yeah, Ergo, you're right.
Is there any projects coming down the pike that, before December, that we need to hang on to money for?
No, so we, we're still protected a little bit.
I need to talk to you about also. We've got another little issue. Uh, I'm still working on getting prices on it right now.
Okay.
The mixing system has went out in the big million gallon tank.
Oh, that's great.
The one that we just repaired a couple years ago?
Uh, the one that we put in, I think in 2018 or 19. That mixer has went out, and it's actually affecting the water quality in the system right now. The chlorine residuals are dropping down right now. We're having to put a lot of...
So who was that that done that job?
Joe Bailey, or with Water Management engineered it up, and there was a company that put it in, and they have went out of business now. We, me and y'all tried to contact them yesterday, and they have sold out to two or three other companies.
What are we talking about, cost wise, to get this fixed or replaced?
We really, we really don't know a cost right now, cause we haven't been able to find anyone to fix it, but there are multiple ways. It's an electric pump sitting in the bottom of that water plant.
Yeah.
You either gonna have to dump that million gallons of water out and put it out on the ground, and then pay someone to go in there and repair it, or you'll have to pay divers to come in and put the pump in underwater. Or there's a third option. Jay Hoffman, if you remember him to put the mixer in the little tank, he could put a new mixing system that doesn't use any electricity. It will never wear out. There's a lifetime warranty on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's about 165,000 on that job there.
No, it's 140,000.
Oh, okay.
It's a pretty bold claim.
That sounds better.
Yeah, I like that claim. Forty.
Well, there's no moving parts. There's...
Why didn't we use this first time?
A lot, the company that, well, Joe Bailey, the engineer that didn't know about these kind of mixers at the time. It was, it was, there wasn't a lot of them being used at that time.
I think there was, this was, I think there was some miscommunication on, on this, and this is prior to me. But this person was saying this, this person was saying this, this one was wanting to sell a product, and this other one was wanting to sell a product. This guy come by cheaper, and now he's out of business.
I have a question. What is ARPA?
It's American Rescue, uh...
It's COVID?
Yeah, it basically goes back...
But that will expire.
Yeah.
Yeah, has to be used by December.
Yeah.
And it's limited to our infrastructure by protocol.
Yeah, yeah.
But as time goes on, and we get closer to even 100 months, like August and stuff, chlorine will be dropping even more significantly. We'll have to be flushing more. That means longer hours at the plant, more water being put on the ground that we're not getting profit from.
You're saying it's affecting the quality of the water now, how?
Because the chlorine is dropping. There's not enough chlorine to keep it this, keep it this effective.
We've got a real problem. We could turn into a real problem.
We're trying to stay on top of it right now by flushing. That, that's the only way to keep ahead of it if the mixers are down.
The mixer basically keeps the chlorine and the chemicals throughout the entire, the flushing allows it to basically...
I know, I know that. That's why I was asking.
Yes.
What quality was being affected.
We're, we're, we're passing everything right now. Everything's safe to drink, but it could get out of hand if we don't get a handle of it in the future.
Well, here's what I would say. If it comes to, if it comes to an emergency thing, we need to, you need to go on and get the prices on it.
I've, I've got, I got Jay giving me a price. I'm putting a new top mixer, and I'm trying to find someone to repair that one to see the price difference.
And then we need to, we need, if we need to end up having a special call meeting to get this resolved.
Okay. That's what me and Lisa was talking about.
Is Joe Bailey still working up there?
We need to, we need to make sure that we stay on top of it.
He just told, I called him and talked to him Wednesday. He told me to call the manufacturer, and that's when I found out they had sold out, and they're no longer doing it.
Yeah, sitting on the beach.
Is this, I mean, I'll just ask from a standpoint of how urgent is this? Is this something we need to declare an emergency to bypass certain bidding requirements? Or we got time to take care of that?
I would, I would try to get on it as soon as possible because it takes, when I talked to Jay, it takes six to eight weeks to get those, all the parts.
Oh. Can we do the emergency thing?
I don't know how the bid process is on that. I've never...
You mean if we declare an emergency, that we need to address certain things that we can bring into...
We have this every year, this time of year. We have, every year, this time of year. It's not anything any different.
I've been waiting on the years for all this to start following in.
Yep.
It always goes up to the heat.
You can't just ignore it.
The mandate's on the situation.
Customers have it, too.
We're also under great water, but great water...
The Great Order states that we have to have an exception.
So I wouldn't trust him as far as I'm concerned.
I have, we don't want to be so not fun.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, you don't, you really have to be...
All right. Back to this pump. Did we already vote on that?
No, I need it first.
I need a, I need a motion on this raw water intake pump, too?
From ARPA.
From ARPA, if, if I have a motion on that.
I make a motion to take the money from ARPA.
That's $7,319.
Yes, my second.
I have a first by Mary Bell, a second by Stacia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like si, motion carries. Thank you.
So we need to go in to get the new one?
And then are you gonna try to get those bids soon?
I think we could do that.
I should have them by Monday.
Why don't you give me a price on a new one?
Okay.
And we'll, let's do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
And, and just, that way we have an accurate number on that as well.
Okay.
And if you have something that we need beforehand, let's see where we're at, and keep us updated.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Well, if he can get us the numbers, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with it, so. But I, I will say that I think this time of the year, it, it kind of stays like that in general a little bit anyways because of the temperatures.
Yes.
So maybe ideally, let's try to regroup it, and you keep an active log on it and see where we're at.
I've got the guys, they've been going out there staying, making sure that the chlorine's staying up. See, and everything's dated and logged.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. The next thing is, is I have, uh, looked at the ideas of sidewalk work. Y'all have probably seen some in town that we've been doing. One thing that I would, I would like to see is basically on Clay Street going on, on down towards the hospital area, and then cutting on McMurtry. Basically having that access going into the hospital and signature healthcare area. I think this is a good thing because we want to make sure that the citizens can get to the hospital, even if they're walking or anything to that sort. And, and ideally, um, they did, the hospital did say that they wanted to help any way that they could. But I told them, I was like, you know, we, we want to, we want to help you all out. They're doing good things. They've got, they've got that new surgical unit open. And I want to make sure that they feel the welcome that we appreciate them as well, so.
I will, I will say that C.C. Robinson called and emailed me and said the hospital is willing to sign any easement agreements or anything that will assist in getting the sidewalks constructed. So it's something that we can get an easement for and make sure that we have good...
And on the other side, what's on the, by the ER side, what's that? Is that?
McMurtry, um...
Is that Gillespie?
On Gillespie.
Gillespie, yes. Um, they, I even told them that if they wanted to contribute to this, basically on the shoulder of the left side, kind of have like a little walk path, but still have it accessible for traffic. It won't bother anybody.
Cause what you're having right now is you are having a lot of hospital employees who are walking along the street to get to the back.
So that's, I think this would be a good thing.
Me, too.
I think it would, too. I think it'd be nice if you just bring it right on out to McMurtry.
You wouldn't walk on it, anyway.
Oh, man. All right, so that price for that job there is $16,632? Do I have a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I have a first by Tony.
A second.
Second by Coleman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like si, motion carries. All right. The last thing that I have that's not on there, um, we had a breakdown on our garbage truck. It's just a repair. And it was, um, $3,802.18. Um, what was that, a pan or something?
It's a tipper.
Oh, yeah, the lift gate for the trash, trash cans. And I, I would like to see if we can get a motion to pay for that out of occupational tax.
I make a motion that we get that from occupational tax. Oh, second.
Oh, second. I have a first by Coleman, second by Rempro, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, motion carries. Um, informational, we do have the summer, uh, fun day at Ellis Park from ten-thirty to one-thirty. Um, so be sure, and see if we can get the word out, I think that's gonna be, Bouncy House of Snow Collins, and maybe they're gonna have the fire truck spraying water for the kids and everything, so. That'd be the twenty-ninth.
June the twenty-ninth?
Uh-huh, the Saturday.
Like, day after tomorrow, okay.
Yeah. And then, um, of course, y'all have this paper in front of you all. Um, the other informational thing for the public as well is, we are gonna start the Hartz transit. It, it takes off Monday morning, and so if anybody, um, needs any, uh, it, uh, question, has any questions on this, just call this number, and, and let's see if we can get the word out to try to make this thing happen into a good thing. Um, I hope it takes off well.
I've had someone request a stop on it, I don't know when it's gonna be adjusted, or when-
So, basically, right now, it's gonna be a trial error until we get this thing established pretty good, and, and I think, uh, those of y'all that don't know, Buddy Shrewsbury's gonna be the driver. Um, and I think that we're gonna make the adjustments, and if, if somebody needs a pickup somewhere, we're gonna try to help it out to get this thing promoted and take off in the right direction, um, but we had to have a starting point.
I've heard a lot of good things coming out of people from it.
I have too, there was a request-
They're excited about it.
For these apartments.
Well, and, and I-
My name's left me.
And I think that's gonna be on that list anyways, once he's in that area, and if they call him, they'll just go down there. It'll be, it'll be taken care of, and that can be added on, and we'll take care of it.
And my sister, she, I was telling her about that, and she said, well Nancy, I sent ten of groceries from one place to her house, and I said, I hope that somebody remembered that, just 'cause she's on a-
Well, and, and ideally-
So how, you know, they can't-
Ideally, it's one of those things that we, we, Buddy's type person, we'll take care of it, and he, you know, he'll, he'll make sure that he can get them there, if he's not busy tied up and stuff like that.
That's a, that's a lot for him personally.
But that's one of those things too, that if it's something to that sort, that's where we're relying on Gritz and the senior center to kind of handle that little angle of it for the most part, because we're not, we don't have the wheelchair accessible set up, or anything to that nature yet. Um, so that's, that's just a starter for us, but-
Is Walmart a new addition?
Yes.
Okay, I did, I thought there was liability going out city limits.
No.
Okay. All right, good deal.
So, and that's, you know, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna have a pickup or drop-off, that's just stating if they need to go there.
Gotcha.
Uh, we'll, we'll go there, so it'll be all right. Um, and I think we should, on another information, we should have our downtown speakers getting installed within the next few weeks, so I'm excited to see that get done. Um, other than that, I think I'm, I'm good. Um, I do have, um, David Henderson here, code enforcement, he's gonna give us a little briefing update on what he's been at.
David Henderson, I'm new code enforcement officer, uh, since I took over, I'd like to really say I appreciate all of Lisa's help. Uh, it hasn't been a transition for me to, to come in and take over, but, uh, she's been helping me through all this, and going around to check and everything, and, and, uh, and since I've started, I think I've had, uh, nine warnings that I've given out. Uh, everybody's been doing a very well job of taking care of it after I've, you know, sent out like two citations so far, and one's came in and paid, and the other one's still ongoing as of, as of now, so. But everybody seems to be trying to, you know, take care of their, of their property, and, and, uh, you know, once, once I do give the citations, you know, or the warnings, I mean, uh, you know, go back and keep an eye on everything and, and check out, and and I have had a few phone calls, uh, the, the ladies in office have, you know, give me some calls of concerned people, and I've, I've contacted them, so I'll go by and check them out, and, uh, you know, just try to, try to take care of the, of the city, and keep it as, as nice as we can, you know, I mean. Uh, and if y'all see anything, I'm gonna let them know, they'll call me. Uh, do everything we can, work together to, to, uh, keep everything nice and looking good for, for Hartford, so.
Yeah, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody got any questions for me, feel free to, you know-
Oh, oh, no, David, David, since you're here and Nancy's here, I know on occasion she does ask the code enforcement officer sometimes to accompany her or to deliver things for violations.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I think we're gonna get together here in a minute, we got a few things to go, so, yeah, that's, uh, that's-
And he's really done a good job at it, he's, uh, he's took the initiative, and he's gonna, he's gonna try to implement the, the meetings again for the committee.
Yeah.
And that's, and I think that's important to get back on their feet, because we need to get the, I, I strongly have said it since day one, we need to stiffen it up a little bit, so we need to, we need to get the positive, and we need to see how we, we can get the committee involved.
Cause I have contacted our board members, and, you know, going through the, the bylaws and everything, I've read, uh, supposed to have a monthly meeting.
Yep.
And I don't think they've been having, you know, the monthly meetings, so I, I'm gonna have a meeting with them next Friday, and tell them that, you know, we got some things we gotta go over.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of business that needs to be done, so.
Some gentlemen's, you know, some hearings instead, that's gonna come up, so.
And you're here, I'm just gonna make sure, 'cause I know there's been some questions about, you know, enforcement and, and liens and cleanup from the city's standpoint for people who don't plow, you know, just a reminder, you know, none of that, we can't do any enforcement on the property, we've cleaned it up in absolute urgency, the other citation has been issued, it's a final.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, and then there's a process to go through that, so it just, I know in the past, there's been some confusion, they just send out people to clean them, like, we can't do that.
Oh, no, no, you gotta, you gotta do the citation, then the finals, and, and all that, so, you know, but as I said, everybody's, you know, I, I worked with her, I'm doing all the, the abandonment properties, and we tried to get that all squared away soon as I come in, and, and, uh, and a lot of them, some of them have been taken off, 'cause they, you know, have been working on them or whatnot, so, uh, but still, I'm keeping an eye on a few of them, that's, that's kind of still, kind of shabby, but, but, uh, we'll get there.
I, I, I called him on one, and I come home that evening, and they, they was out there taking care of it. It's like, all right, that's good, good deal. So if y'all have anything, just get ahold of Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it, I wanted to bring him in, give a little update, and, and just, if you can, basically, get everybody on the same page and see if we can get something passed on that other.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll take care of that next Friday, so we'll get there.
All right.
Appreciate it.
All right, Nancy? Thank you. Well, do you want to give them just a briefing on it?
That's what I had on the prayer in front of us.
Yeah, just give them a briefing on that real quick.
And that, that way you can review it, and let's go.
We all have pamphlets, and if you just want to pick up the very first, like, pamphlet. This is what we did for updating our ordinances, because they were very, very old, and they needed it to add, but there's more that can be done as well. So what we worked on this time, it's, uh, the terms and definitions, that's Article Two. Article eleven is time regulations, and then we have six, that's establishment of districts. That was what was worked on the most. If, if you look at terms and definitions, uh, they didn't really change, but I have, I have a suggestion on changing a few of them. And I had a meeting on the fourteenth myself, with my board, uh, the other day. And so they approved whatever, and said, this is my board for you. They said, what do you think? And I said, it's not what I said. I said, Doc, you all have them, I want you to look at them and stuff, and they had, so, 'cause I got them to them earlier. So, um, they approved them, but I haven't gotten signed yet, because we haven't been back for a meeting, but I have a copy of those in here also. The first thing is the, uh, followed all the regulations for an amendment to our proposal for amendment for planning and zoning, um, public necessity, we had to have a parent, so we did that. Um, and I have this section here, that shows me where we had argued before, and they are, and all my persons signed. Paper that I, the second one would be the application for changing the ordinance. So it's got in here that that's what this is, and then legal documents, and all the things that would go along with our, our comprehensive plan that I put in there to say that it was acceptable to it. I updated that, and, uh, so we have copies of that as well. First page of here, again, what you have to do to do this, public hearing, notices, and then after my city council would, uh, sign off on the minutes, um, I have to make sure that you all have copies of them as well, because that's actually for a, um, ordinance change, where you go through that, and I have to have enough to sign.
Where's my paper at?
So, um, thank you for part two.
It'll be two reading, it'll be, it has to be read twice, and, uh, what I'll do, Nancy, is, is once you tell me that we're good, I will prepare the proposed ordinance from a summary, and so that for publication purposes, it might just be pages long. And we'll get that, we'll, we'll get that prepared for the first and second reading, so it can get passed.
Right, so I, but I really wanted them to have these to go over, and they didn't run the draft, because I'm starting doing all this in my group, I said, what do you want, what do you want? And they said, they don't want it, they just say, go ahead. And, uh, I don't want to go ahead. So I told them, I said, well, this is the rough draft, and I wanted you to look at it to tell me the changes that you thought you would want, so they did take time to look at it, and they said, well, you're gonna update any kind of errors and different things, and, and put in some definitions, 'cause I did want to change some definitions. And, uh, they said, just go ahead and do it, and they voted that in, that I just go ahead and do it. And I said, I have to have Tara help me with that before I would even go anymore.
So Nancy and I have been working, uh, for several months now, with, as well as with, uh, the, uh, Sean who came and did some training for the planning and zoning to, uh, basically to get the, these particular portions of our ordinance up to date, and compliant with our current comprehensive plan that we just adopted a few years back. Uh, this does allow for Nancy to have a bit more leeway when businesses want to come into town without having to go through all the hoops of conditional use. It, it gives her a lot more flexibility, and it's bit, it's more business friendly, I would say, uh, for our district, so I think that that is a, has a big thing. And signage issues, we've had some constitutional cases that have come, come down the pipe, that we require a few changes on some of our signage language in our ordinance. But, uh, she's given you all this, for you all to look at, 'cause this is our-
And then you'll have to write it up.
Right, this is, this is the draft that we have, there may be a few small changes that we still have, I think she's outlined a few. But what I will do is, uh, before the next meeting, Nancy and I'll get together and actually draft, uh, the text amendment language for this to be read for.
And I would, I would ask that the council members review this, and if they have any questions on this, 'cause this, uh, there's a lot of language in there.
Yeah.
And so, uh, that gives time to review, and maybe have questions at a later date, if you see something that you all studied over.
I did need to bring something up, the business district of what was really changed. Because if you notice that in Hartford and all, like, to Vividown, everything's a B-three, we only have the Corkhouse down here, and right by the river, that'll be two and a B-one.
Right.
That's it. So what did that let me do? Or leaning things, but I went to each time, a lot of times I'd go to the mayor and say, what do you want me to do, this business wants to come in, and, and it'll fit there, but, and they always say, take in any business you can, I, you know, and I understand that, because you want your businesses to come in, and they have room and parking spaces, everything you want, so that will help that a lot. But, um, I do have to ask about, uh, businesses and having apartments, you know, with something on the ground floor behind them, if that you could possibly do that. Because I talked with Paul about it, and I, I wanted to make sure that you all have some kind of suggestion, because you can't let, keep in mind, you cannot let that apartment or that section right there interfere and be in the same drive and stuff, that you have trucks and everything coming through. They have to have, they would have to somehow have a separate drive for them, that stays out of anything to do with that business, because, uh, even, even a loading and unloading dock in the back of a business, they have to have a way to get out and not get through the traffic, that's, you know, persons, clients, they can't interingle with it. Now, that's been that way for a long time, so I always have to make sure that they have a way to get in, and they can go ahead and circle and come in, that's not getting with the front of the, so I don't know how that would work with the apartment, because I know each mayor, again, has, wants to have more living quarters, and that's our contract, you know, what we did in it, and the comprehensive plan will state that we would try to work towards having more living quarters.
I will say that it was recommended by the gentleman that, that did the training, that did the business districts, who still refrain from first level living quarters, just because it does tend to, uh, sometimes be perverted by certain people as to how they kind of manipulate the usage of that area. But that, what this does, as well as with our comprehensive plan, it does allow us to have more, instead of saying, oh, you want to put a duplex here, you can now. You, you can, you can put it in, just because there might be some single-family residences, so long as we relax a few of those, uh, requirements in our comp plan, as well as the business inside some of those residential districts, so it does give us more leeway, uh, I think.
And I think, you know, I needed to ask this question, because I don't know the answer, I don't know what you would want to consider, but it could be a possible way to have more places, and it could also, what I thought would be good, it was a place wanted to have, 'cause I've worked this before, um, guard, they want security, and so they want somebody living on that property, so I just don't know how you work it, except to get them a different driveway that they don't interingle with the business at all. And it would need to be kind of for the business, is the reason you had it there, I think it needs some kind of stipulations, just saying, we're gonna put parks back here, we can't do that. So if you all want to think about that, uh-
And that doesn't have to be part of this amendment, it can, it, and that doesn't have to be part of this amendment, it can come later, if something's on the table.
Yeah, but I did, I did need to bring it forward, somebody had brought to me, so.
Well, ideally, I mean, and Stacia sits on a committee with, uh, the judge and a few others on housing, um, you know, we, it's, it is a dire need, and we don't know the approach that we want to take at it, but we know we want to see, explore the ideas.
Yeah.
But we don't know where, either.
Well, y'all don't give us ideas, we don't know what, what anybody wants, so.
Well, there's property that we, there's property that we've looked at, and stuff like that, and try, we're, I would like to see somebody develop it, and, um, maybe, like, what is that over there, Tayl, is it Taylor's over there, the double-wide place over there, whatever?
Yeah, there's, there, there are a few different things that we can talk about, we, you know, there, there's planned communities and stuff of that nature, that, there, there are some aspects of planning and zoning, what we run into is that unfortunately, um, city limits are only so big.
That's, that is, that is the big thing there too.
I believe you did ask me at one time about, uh, maybe, I wanted you to put in maybe tiny houses somewhere with a cheaper-
That was, that, that was a discussion.
I looked it up, it would have to go on the, like, planned unit development.
And, and then that would go into, like, the, it, it would almost be classified like an RV park as well.
By itself.
So, so that was another issue, so we, we, there's a lot of hurdles in there, but-
With that, you wouldn't want mixed uses, unless you, uh, because you could put a, an area in the middle for everybody to maybe sit down to offer something. You could do that, you could put places around like that, but you don't want to mix in big houses, little houses.
Right, yeah.
And planned unit development would almost be kind of like an HOA type thing scenario, so you're-
Yeah, you might want, you could, at the time, if it's a, a plan, then you don't have to follow exactly what I would say, I would have to work with DC what you say, and make sure you've got the room to do it. And those have to have, I think it's a five or ten acres to, to start out.
And that's running into the city limit issues over it.
Yeah.
But it could be a good thing.
But right now, I think the biggest thing, like I said, is, well, these three things that she's put-
Just trying to get that, yeah, I agree.
And, and if, if anybody has any questions or anything, 'cause, you know, Nancy and I, we have looked at this a lot, but sometimes when you look at something a lot, it's easy to overlook, or to think you see something that's not really there.
So just, uh, review it, and then I guess if you have something by the next meeting, we'll, we'll pass.
As soon as Nancy gives me the go-away, we'll just.
Well, I was gonna tell you, the person that helped organize this up is the one that trained, we don't have to have training, so that we could have these done, and have everybody trained, so you all help take- everybody trained, so you all helped pay for that, and, uh, so got everybody with you trained, so I appreciate it very much, but, and that was great, and the trainer, uh, he's a director, planning and zoning, uh, for the state, and luckily enough, I knew years ago, so he's been helping us all along, and, uh, he did most of this, so like the terms, those type of things, I, and especially the signage, I'm not touching it, if you all would not care, because he took that from the changes that the state had taken in.
Yeah.
And so that was great, 'cause it can be very confusing.
Right.
So that one, I think it's pretty good, and then the terms and definitions of it, and the fact that you have to think about, there's a section in there under healthcare, and I need to bring that up, because I have researched it, looked at it, pulled things off the internet, and if you have something that's in, inpatient, that should fall under conditional use going in, but if you have something that's outpatient, like a boys' home, or, uh, places to-
Right.
Get doctor's appointments, and, and drug stores and all that stuff, there's no in-house, no stand, then that should fall under just being able to put it in, so we have to work on that, really what is called convalescent home, what's called a nursing home, and I just wanted to see if I could just change it off, one inpatient, the other same, uh, outpatient facility, these four houses.
Right.
I'm gonna come up with something.
Well, I think in our definitions, we added the term of clinic, which is, you know, care, human care, medical, but limited to outpatient only, so I think that was-
Yeah, you're gonna see it both ways in there, that's why I'm telling you this right now, because it ha, it needs to be adjusted, so that's one thing that I'm, I wanna change, but I'm not, I don't wanna change everything, then everybody come back and say, well, I don't like it, they don't like that, or they do like that, so that's why I wanted to have it now, and, and the front.
You've been talking about that. Why do you wanna change convalescent nursing homes to-
They're mixed up in there.
Inpatient or outpatient?
Because there was a difference, and we hadn't, we hadn't determined it, and I said, you gotta determine.
We have to determine it?
Well, I, I have to get it.
Just law state, you have to?
We have to go by, you know, what it's termed.
What is in the KRS.
Yeah, that's, well, this-
To develop our regulations.
Yeah, so I guess you would say it that way, but, um, I looked up what is a, I don't know what, you might say, this, the civic center, what's, uh, different things like that, but I said outpatient and inpatient, that would solve the whole thing.
No, it would.
Well, you can write something.
We said it more than.
I know what a-
All right, so that's all the information that we have on that.
I will call.
Tara, you just get it back to us whenever we can, and then we'll regroup on this matter at the next meeting, if we, if we have to. Um, does anybody in the crowd have anything that they need to bring forward? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting, or?
I do have one question.
Okay.
It was actually brought up to me, and I told them that I'd be in a city council meeting, so they asked me to, I had a couple people concerned, especially when they leave my office, they go beside, on their, on Washington Street over here to pull out beside the radio station, um, there's been a lot of food trucks down there, so it's been more noticeable and more of an issue, but the, the, the first parking spot there, right in front of the, it, it blocks your view, and it's very dangerous to pull out.
I will, uh, send Chief York down there, and I'll also call, uh, I think the radio station's the one that's promoting.
Well, it's, it's not even just, it's, it's more or less just, it's so close to